Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, it is ten AM and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order, everyone will please rise in invocation followed by the pledge. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day, thank you for all the men and women that serve the citizens of Hardin County, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. God bless Hardin County and God bless America, amen.
Amen.
And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, this is a special meeting of Hardin County Commissioners Court. The main reason we're here today is for, uh, to conduct a workshop, but we also have some regular business to attend to as well. Item number three of the workshop to, uh, with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, LGA Engineering, and other specialists regarding details of the FEMA-funded Beaver Brook Crossing Improvement Project. This crossing sustained severe damages during Hurricane Hardin in twenty seventeen. Hardin County's been working with FEMA, TDM, and LGA to repair the crossing pursuant to state and federal guidelines since that time. So just as a quick recap, and Commissioners, correct me where I might be incorrect or add what I missed, but, uh, we've been talking about this several times over the past, uh, number of years. We did receive, uh, approval from FEMA to make repairs to this crossing on Beaver Brook Road, which is down off of Keith Road in Precinct Three, just outside Precinct Four in Lumberton. And, uh, we had a, uh, we've gone through several PDMGs, those are rank managers with FEMA. After disaster, you get assigned one, if it's a presidentially declared disaster. And I think on about number four or five, we came up with a, uh, excellent plan to replace, uh, seven or eight culverts down there with a bridge. Uh, that is, uh, an idea that I believe Mr. Crowley had pitched to our PDMG at that time, and whoever else was involved at the time, and it was accepted. And, uh, that was designed and engineered, and we went out for bids. The bids came in more than twice the amount of the, uh, amount budgeted. And, uh, there's, uh, several times there where we went back and forth with some bidders to talk about what needed to be done, where they would bid it and get it in under the, uh, amount, uh, but long story short, after about a two-year process, I think the, uh, bid came in, uh, we, I think we only received one bid, uh, or maybe it was two, but the low bid was four point eight million, and the budget for this is somewhere around one point six million. And, uh, so Samantha's here from TDM, she and several other of her colleagues with, uh, Colin Resnick, had worked with FEMA to try to get them to approve that amount, but the, uh, end result was they would not approve the overage. They would only approve up to the amount that was already approved previously, and the reason was because we changed, we were changing from the current seven or eight, however many culverts are there, to this bridge conception. And even though the PDMG that we had at that time said it wouldn't be a problem, it is a problem. And so, uh, we've gone back to the drawing board. The original, uh, scope of work included that we would have to put in a temporary road in order to take those culverts out and replace them. The citizens back there, and I think that's probably a couple of, uh, maybe about a hundred homes, something like that, that are on the side of the side of that bridge with one eight, one way in and one way out, would have to take an alternate route to get in and out. The problem with that is, which Mr. Crowley had brought up two or three years ago, and he reiterated it to us again a couple of months ago, is that that's gonna be a low crossing. And so if we endure any flooding, which of course we haven't had in, what, two months now? If we endure any flooding, that's still gonna block the people from being able to get in and out back there. And so there's been some dog talk about maybe, uh, getting approval to make some changes. And, uh, I thought it would be best, instead of us going back and forth by email and having a discussion with some people present, some people not, let's get all the commissioners on board, let's have a workshop, and let's see if we can get to a final consensus on what we, what we can do here, and what would be approved, or what TDM feels like FEMA might approve. And then it'll be my job to write a letter to request approval, to submit, uh, you know, a certain type of project that would be approved, and see if they will pay for that. Did I miss anything?
No.
Cody, you agree that that's where we are today?
Yes, I would like to add, uh, the design engineer was gonna call in remotely.
He's here, is his name Wheeler?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure he was available.
Yes, sir, he's here, and let's get, let's get them all up. You wanna add anything?
No, sir, I think you covered it.
Okay, so I wanna thank, uh, everybody from TDM who's here today, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for all the time y'all put into this, I know a couple of you are new, have been working with you since about February on this, I believe. Uh, I think there might be some people here from Colin Resnick, is Erin McDonald with Colin Resnick?
Erin and Marissa.
Marissa, okay. And then we have Cody. So, uh, where would y'all like to begin this discussion as far as, uh, trying to get to a point that we can all agree that we have, uh, a way for the citizens to get in and out during construction, and put forth a, uh, scope of work that can be designed properly by an engineer, and then hopefully we can all afford to go forward and get this repaired? There are some new, uh, damages there here recently, and I don't know if Amanda's had time to look at that, but, uh, we did have a, a citizen reach out to us about a week and a half ago that, I say new damages, it's not new damages, it's, it's deteriorating from the, from the damages from Har- Har- from Harvey, and so we need to do something, you know, fairly quick.
I was gonna say, I'd like to kind of expand upon the, the idea of, uh, the, uh...
Yes, sir, come on up.
What was the budgeted amount, one point six or four point six?
No, the budgeted amount is one point six, and then we have a, so is it a ninety-ten split? I believe that's a ninety-ten project.
It is, and then, uh, Senate Bill Seven would cover most of that.
Yes, sir, amen.
So, what I was about to say was, uh, our recommendation is to avoid the need for a bypass road, if, if possible, as, as you, you mentioned. Not only because some of it is in low-lying floodplain of Beaver, uh, of Black Creek, but the, the temporary crossing, the contractor I spoke to, the contractor was a little bitter for the bridge project, has some serious concerns about putting in a temporary crossing across Black Creek. He said his insurance will not cover that thing being washed out. He is, he would want his bid to account for every time they have to replace that temporary crossing during the, the course of that construction project. But furthermore, though, he also had the similar concerns I did, is that, that bypass road is gonna be useless during a flooded event. Uh, he said we would really have to build up most of that road up about six, eight feet, you know, and at that point, the, the amount of fill you have to bring in to do that is, now you're, you're probably exceeding the, the cost of the bridge. Uh, so he, he basically suggested as, as we have that, there's gotta be some solution that we could do to that crossing, that, that we can maintain traffic on that crossing. So that's why, uh, we then spoke to, to Robert Wheeler again. You know, we had, we had designed the bridge in a way that, uh, you can maintain traffic on it, and you didn't need the bypass route. So I asked, is there a way to repair these culverts, re- replace these culverts, and still maintain some traffic, uh, and not need that bypass route, which is what he came up with. But then as he looked further into it, he said the, the, the challenges of that, and I, I don't wanna get into the details, I'll let Robert do that, is the, the amount of shoring required, the safety concerns. He said it would be so much better if we can just jack pipes under that embankment, uh, and replace the culverts that way, and then just, you know, abandon the, the, the damaged culverts in place. Uh, and again, I'll let him get into the details, but he said that the, even the, the open cut, you know, the original open cut, you know, method that FEMA had proposed, he goes, that's gonna, the, the amount of shoring it's gonna need, you're gonna have to cut off the drainage. You're still gonna have to jack pipes under the embankment just to maintain direct, your positive drainage flow as you're open cutting those, those culverts. So it seems totally redundant to jack in pipes to maintain drainage, but not be able to leave those pipes for as a permanent. So, we, we understand FEMA's concern about this as introducing improvements that weren't there before, but you're abandoning the improvements that you're replacing. Uh, the, the net result is the same amount of culverts that's there before, the same amount of cross-sectional opening that's, that's there now. Uh, it's, it's just, we're putting in a pipe next to one that's damaged, and then we'll abandon that one, fill it in. Uh, that's what we were kind of led to believe is probably not eligible. Robert, I'll, I'll kind of, uh, if you wanna talk about more of the, the pros and cons of either one, or your, really your concerns about open cut, I'll, I'll open it up to you.
Yeah, so, I mean, you've kind of already hit on it. Um, you know, it's, it's not gonna be as simple as, you know, Robert's sheet piles with the amount of, um, exposed surface and the, um, the, the size of the openings. Um, I have talked to our construction guys, and, you know, we originally feared that we wouldn't be able to keep the existing pipes open, but, um, he thinks after looking at it again that we can, it's just gonna require kind of a, uh, a more intricate design for the shoring. There's gonna have to be like a whaling system to, to kind of secure around these, these pipes, 'cause they're ninety-six inches and, you know, seven by seven boxes. So, you know, our main concern, I think, well, I mean, to, to start with, I think either way can, it can be done. Um, our concern with the open cut section is just how, how detailed and complex the shoring's gonna be, that we're gonna go back to the way it was the first couple of times we tried to bid it, and we just won't get to bid it. And, you know, obviously, the, the goal is to get this crossing improved and, you know, have the benefit to the, the local citizens as quickly as possible. And I don't think we're gonna get the response that we want if we go with the open cut section.
Yeah, we, but we did, at the county's request, we did prepare the cost estimates for the original open cut, uh, section, uh, it became in a little under seven million, uh, for construction, and then the jacking option came in a little under three, is our estimate. So, uh, the, the jacking option pre- presents a much, you know, simpler process, and it leaves basically the road untouched, it, it's no, no detriment to the traffic, or, you know, the ingress, egress of the, of the citizens out there. The open cut, it obviously is gonna, it's gonna break down to one lane, and it is more than twice the cost. And considerable concerns that, like Robert just mentioned, that contractors may not be interested in that type of project because of the, the risks involved.
Cody, can you define an open cut?
Well, you, you basically open cut the road, you, you cut it open, and you trench down to the culvert. And so, uh, you have to, you know, either use, either shoring or trench back, you know, at a safety, at a safe slope, get down to the culvert, pull the culvert out and replace it, and then backfill it.
So what you're saying is, if we, if we had the money and could go with the, uh, the FEMA design, which was four million dollars or whatever it might have been, those culverts are gonna stay there? They're not being removed under that design, or are they being removed?
Are you referring to the original bridge design?
Yeah, original bridge.
Original bridge design, we were only gonna remove the culverts, that would be within the actual bridge opening. All the other culverts that are outside that, that bridge opening were gonna stay there and be backfilled, and no longer be flowing. We were gonna confine all the flow to the, under the bridge, so to speak.
So with this new concept, we, the old ones will stay in, but new ones are going in?
Well, let me preface that question with FEMA's original scope, design, was we were only gonna replace four specific culverts, I believe. I think there's twelve out there now, but they, they had identified four that were damaged and need to be replaced. So, the, the six, the seven million dollar option now that I, I mentioned was to dig down, pull those out, and replace them. There's a cheaper, that's gonna drastically, you know, damage the road, have to rebuild the road, impact traffic and everything. The other option is work down at the culvert level and just jack a new pipe under the road, adjacent to where the damaged culvert is.
All right.
With the same size, same type and everything.
All right, so...
And then when that culvert's in place, you can backfill the one that's damaged and it's no longer, you know, operational.
So, I heard you say a while ago, or the judge once said low-water crossing. So, doing that right there, if we have a flood out there, that bridge is gonna be under, or that road is gonna be under, correct?
All, all that I explained right there was talking about the, the existing Beaver Brook embankment, not the temporary crossing. Either, either one of these options would not require the temporary crossing. That's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to avoid putting in a, a, on all-weather rock road and temporary crossing upstream of the, the, the current crossing. So neither of these options would need that crossing, just like the bridge didn't need that crossing. But when we found out that the bridge wasn't really eligible for the funds, that's when the county asked us to go back and, and scope out or estimate out FEMA's original plan, which included a, a temporary crossing and, and bypass road, because their original estimate was done years ago. So Amanda had asked me to, given me a current estimate for that original scope. And as I was working on that, I, I, it's, you know, it dawned on me that, hey, there's, there's a lot of concerns about putting in this road. It's not gonna be usable during a flood. The actual culverts that you put in temporarily may wash out during a big flood. And I was, I was, that's why I was talking to the contractor, and he says, yeah, he, he will not replace those culverts at his cost, that they would have to be, you know, built in, that we have to replace them every time they wash away. And then there could be days at a time that, uh, people are just, can't access their homes or get out of homes because that temporary road would be underwater.
Well, it's like, so take away the temporary road idea.
That's what we're trying to do.
All right, and go with this idea you're talking about of going down there and putting this pipe in? If we have a flood, is that still gonna be underwater?
Well, yes.
With, with this new idea you're talking about?
As, as Robert mentioned, that when we thought, we won't be blocking any of the existing culverts that are there. So as we're jacking in, let's say a storm comes through and we're jacking a pipe, obviously the contractor's gonna pull out all their equipment when they see the storm coming. But all the, all the current culverts are still operational, a- and will be allowed to flow during the flood. If it goes underwater, they go underwater.
So you basically work on one at a time?
That, that would be up to the contractor, you know, we don't usually identify means and method. Now, now Robert and their design, they may, they may determine the phasing of the project, but if a contractor feels like they can do two at one time, uh, that, that would really be up to them, you know?
Yeah, there, there's some culverts that are close enough together that it would probably make sense to do two at a time if you're doing the open cut. And, and to kind of go back about the impacts, um, if it does flood, um, whether you're jacking and boring or you're doing an open cut, uh, situation, um, both of those will be impacted if there's flooding down there. Um, so either option will not be better, um, if it comes to a flood. They'll both can be impacted the same.
But my understanding of why the, the jacking option, the, the cheaper, better option would not be, may not be eligible is, it's putting in place an improvement that wasn't there before, even though it's replacing a, an existing culvert that will no longer be useful. Basically, put it more simply, is we can remove and replace a culvert in the exact same place it sits, but we can't put a new one five feet over and, and replace it. It has to be right where it sits, that's my understanding.
FEMA's requirement is like-for-like. So basically what we're trying to find out, if this method, um...
It is like-for-like, it's just not in the same footprint.
Correct, it's like-for-like, it's not in the same footprint. So we're trying to find out if FEMA would accept this as the original project, or if it would be an improved project. Um, in the beginning, whenever Mr. Pelt was here and when Jeff Levens applied for the, the PA and everything, there was no hydrology study done, there was, you know, they don't give you time to do any of that, or funds to do it. You have to come up with a project and say, this is kind of what we wanna do. Well, my problem was always that temporary road, because once they start working on the bridge, that's the only inlet or outlet for anybody there. And we've had three floods this year that would have covered that temporary road, and they would have been stuck.
Did y'all get formed up in that idea to see if there was gonna have to be land acquisition?
Yes.
They, I think you actually are.
We had already, uh, we hadn't acquired it, but we had already done the paperwork for the temporary easements.
There, I think there's three people that we got, uh, permission from for easement through there, and I think one of them was not gonna charge us, 'cause wasn't it energy? It seemed like one of them was not gonna charge us anything if we had to, uh, you know, actually use that easement.
The temporary road comes down a high line, crosses Black Creek, and then comes back to Beaver Brook Road. But Black Creek is, there's a small way to go.
Yeah, as you, as you approach Black Creek, it basically just, really just drops down into like a flood.
It basically goes down to sea level.
And that, 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 yeah, that, uh, that part of the bypass road that would be so low, it, it would go underwater fairly easily. So it'd be, the, the size of the, plus, the size of the crossing that we were putting in was really gonna be, or proposed, FEMA had proposed to put in, was a, uh, a bottleneck in, in and of itself. So you, not only are you putting in a temporary crossing, it's, it's constricting the flow, because that, that, that temporary crossing as, as size was smaller than all the, the culverts at Beaver Brook. So that, that would be another advantage to avoid the temporary crossing, because you wouldn't be putting that bottleneck just upstream of the bridge.
Is anyone in this meeting expecting a Rick Carlin burger? Y'all love him?
Yes, he, he's on our side, he's a, he's a construction guy. I invited him just in case we need him for a foot.
Okay, he's in the meeting there?
Thank you.
I never saw the, uh, part I did, I didn't pay attention. What was the elevation on the original bridge of FEMA?
Uh, the elevation of Beaver Brook Road?
The bridge, it was gonna be the...
The proposed bridge? Robert, do you remember the elevation, I mean, what was it, like, twenty-two, twenty-five, I don't, somewhere in there?
Yeah, um, about twenty-two. We, we were imagining the existing, um...
Yeah, it was gonna be about the size the road is now, which I would think was likely.
But wasn't the water level gonna drop, though?
It did, the bridge itself did provide hydraulic benefit. It was gonna lower the water surface elevation, that was one of the advantages, was it was gonna lower the water surface elevation.
Was it gonna allow that?
Just the increased size of the bridge overall, 'cause right now, the, the crossing itself is twelve culverts that are, that are about five hundred feet apart from the first one to the last one. It's a very unusual crossing, usually you've got culverts that are all together. This one was probably built piecemeal over several years or decades, I don't even know, but, uh, so this was gonna consolidate all the flow, 'cause if you look at an aerial of Black Creek, it's one channel until it gets close to Beaver Brook, and then it spreads out to about twelve, ten, twelve fingers. And then on the other side of Black Creek downstream, it goes back into one channel. This was gonna consolidate it back to one channel under Beaver Brook, and it's gonna be a bigger crossing than the total cumulative crossings now.
It would have been a bridge with pipelines instead of culverts.
Yeah, it would have been a proper bridge, uh, and that, one of the benefits of that, I mean, you, what you could do with culverts is, is Commissioner Young wanted, uh, something that qualified for a text-off, off-system bridge program. The reason this one doesn't qualify, and it won't even if we replace these culverts, is the culverts are too far apart. Uh, text off, when I talk to them, they have a requirement that the, the, the culverts can't be further than, I think, one and a half diameters apart, or something to that effect. And these, these are way too far apart to qualify for that program.
Is the elevation of the bridge currently a problem?
Um, yes, I mean, in Harvey, it was six foot.
Oh, yeah, Harvey, I think, I was told the water got, you know, over the road, but that, again, that's a very unusual event.
Right, and a typical...
We, we will never design for.
In a typical hundred-year storm, um, it doesn't go over the bridge.
Yeah, and, and that's what our model showed, we designed for a hundred-year, and, and, uh, it did reduce the water surface elevation, but it, even the existing hundred-year, uh, storm event didn't, didn't get over the top of the road.
Do you have any new development down there right now?
Yes, a new subdivision just went in down there.
And all these people know this, I guess?
Yeah, I've been trying to keep them updated, they also watch, uh, Commissioners Court, and, and they know we're working on it. Of course, everybody's frustrated, it's taken so long, so, uh... Um, we had a great concept, a good idea, and something that would work even better as this improved project. The problem was, um, FEMA capped the project at one point five.
Three eight two, two six eight.
And, um, when, by the time, you know, they designed it, we started going out for bids, we couldn't get bid several times. And, you know, what's happened with the economy in the last three or four years, um, just the lowest bid came in at four point eight, that's thirty million dollars.
Judge just said four point eight. Yes, sir, one, three eight two, two six eight, and we've already spent nearly three hundred thousand on what we've done to date. So we got about a million, right?
And FEMA would not uncap it. They told us basically to go back to the original plan, which was just replacing the, the culverts that were damaged, um, some guard railing and I think some, some asphalt work. Our problem is access.
You can't do an open cut and do half at a time, or they have to roughly open?
You, that is option one currently, that's the, the roughly seven million dollar project. To avoid using a bypass road, Robert's team can design open cut process, but as you mentioned, it, he, he's concerned that contractors will not want to bid.
And you said that's seven million?
That was our estimate as, as of, uh, late July.
And FEMA said that it doesn't matter, as long as we go back to the original project, that it would not be a cap project, and we'll cover the seven million, or whatever it's going to be, instead of the four point eight.
Same look I had, they wouldn't spend the four point eight because they call it a altered, or whatever improved project. It must be...
And then the jacking option is about two point eight, but that may not qualify, because you're putting culverts where they weren't before.
Doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't. So basically what we need to know from TDM and Colin Resnick is if we go back to the original plan, but we do it this way, and jack the culverts under the road instead of doing the open cut, so we can keep access and, uh, traffic flowing, are they going to consider that an improved project or the original project?
Who would they answer that? Somebody on the call?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave that to Marissa.
Marissa?
Sorry, I was, I get even muted. Um, yeah, I, it sounds like, um, to me that if, if y'all decided to do the, um, the jack work instead, that it might be considered an improved project because the, it's, it's, it doesn't match up to the scope of work as it's written in the nineteen ninety-one, even for the original scope that FEMA wrote of. Um, it's actually pretty specific in here as far as what it's, you know, it's talking about, um, removing or placing a certain amount of, like, the, I guess, the culvert, um, installing the, like, riprap, um, asphalt surface, like, all of that sort of thing. So my concern would be, again, that even though, I guess, the rest are ultimately still working and, and repairing these culverts, that the way that it's being done isn't gonna match up, if FEMA would consider that to be an improved project, if that makes sense.
Marissa, you've been involved in this, uh, ever since we started talking about it earlier this year, I believe, right?
Y- yes, sir, I have.
Can you help us in any way with maybe, uh, guiding us in some direction? We're, you know what we're trying to get around, and that's that, uh, temporary road. Do you have any guidance that you could provide to us that might help us in any way to, to, uh, get this through the FEMA approval process and make it work so that the citizens still have a way in and out, and we have contractors that would be willing to bid the project, and it, it not be, uh, seven point eight million dollars?
So, this might honestly be something that we might want to see if we can get in touch with, uh, someone on the FEMA side to kind of go over more in detail. Ultimately, you know, that decision is going to be up to them. Um, and, and just initial thoughts right now of, if you guys, you know, decide this is the way that, that we, we need to do this, it's gonna be basically most beneficial, um, you're actually gonna be able to get someone to bid all the work and get it done. Um, we can send that request up to FEMA for their review, and they could amend the scope of work. I think the main kind of concern is just if it becomes an improved project, the project is gonna be capped at that, um, at the current eligible obligated amount. So anything that you guys incur over what's currently obligated isn't gonna be something that we can reimburse on, um, on our, on our side or for, you know, from FEMA. So, the, I guess, uh, amending the scope to match what you guys want to do, um, should be a relatively straightforward process, it's just the concern of that cost overrun.
And just for everybody's knowledge, we have already requested FEMA to approve the bridge concept, which came in at four point eight million, and they've denied that, correct?
Marissa, the, when we keep saying improved project, is the definition of improved project like permanent improvement that wasn't there before?
So FEMA defines an improved project as, you know, it is basically like making an improvement to, so it's not going exactly back to the scope of work, it's something improved, but the functionality of the scope is the same. So, you know, let's say if you guys were saying, hey, we don't wanna do anything with these, these roads, these culverts, we wanna build a whole new facility instead, that would be like an alternate project, because you'd be changing the functionality of it.
So for, for the jacking project, if, if, if the scope says we need to remove and replace an eight-foot pipe, rather than replace it or remove it, we wanna keep it there, abandoning it, but put a new one right next to it that replaces it, that's not, that's hydrologically, that's not an improvement, and you still have an eight-foot pipe. Why would that be considered an improvement?
I, it's... I guess, from... I get what you're saying, but I guess from, from our standpoint, we're seeing as, I guess it's kind of FEMA's just general term for kind of capturing, um, something that is going back to the scope of work, but it is the functionality that's keeping it...
I appreciate the answer. The reason I ask is, the way we would need to design the, the current scope of work still may not match what is written in the scope of work, uh, as far as the quantities and everything. So how much deviation from the scope of work can we get before FEMA may declare it, this is not what we originally scoped out? Even if we're, even if our intent is to dig down... Even if we're, e- even if our intent is to dig down, remove and replace these culverts, the implementation of that may require a lot more sheep howling or shoring than FEMA uh estimated.
Right.
Some some of which may have to be remained in place, you know, so I just wanna, you know, I guess I'm still not clear on what would or wouldn't be allowed as 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 an improvement if it deviates from the original scope of work.
Right, and so for the like the quantities and stuff like that, so for example, part of the scope of work is saying, one of these parts is like thirty four point three cubic yards of asphalt surface cores. So like, you know, it may not take you guys exactly thirty four point three cubic yards, it could be more. Um I, that's something that I don't the worst case scenario, we, let's say you guys do the work as it's currently written in this original scope, um we would be able to basically saying these costs are still allocable, allocable to the scope of work, so you guys are still incurring, you know, maybe it's more cubic yardage than what's currently written in here specifically, but we could still say, okay, you know, this is going to removing and replacing that asphalt.
So the 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 ma- it seems like the only potential hangup on this would be the word remove, that we would not be removing these damaged culverts, we're just replacing them as, you know, in kind, right next to them. Is, how would how would we, how would the county go about getting a definitive answer on that?
On on whether or not that would be something that could be changed in the scope?
Yes.
Um so that's something that we would basically have to process that um improved project or scope change request up to FEMA for their review and them to provide a response on that. Um again, we might be able to get someone on the FEMA side to um kind of join in on the meeting so we can get an answer from FEMA themselves of, hey, you know, what, whether, what do they think? Um what are their concerns, stuff like that before we send over that um that formal request letter from you guys. Um we can definitely see if that's an option, otherwise it would just be a matter of processing that request, waiting for FEMA to review and then respond to it. Um and then whenever they do that formal review, they could also send back uh a request for information over RFI, just asking for a little bit more information on their side to be able to give a a final determination.
Okay, so I get, I wanna kind of get off of option two for now, the jacking issue, and I I wanna, I got a question for Robert. If, Robert, if the county decides just to move forward right now with redesigning this thing as per the original scope eh other than the the bypass road, you know, our estimate, your estimate of about six point nine million, do you have any concerns about that other than contractors may simply not bid it? Is that, is that, is that a viable option other than that, that concern?
Yes, yes, talking with our our construction folks, you know, we feel like the option won't work. Um so yes, our main concern would be can we get people to, you know, actually bid it, uh which, you know, again, goes back to the first couple of times we tried to bid the bridge project, um we were showing um a lot of shoring. Uh and then later on in the design, you know, we came up with the idea that we would basically build the bridge into the ground first, open it up and then allow the contractor to then excavate underneath the bridge, which eliminated um a ton of shoring that we were proposing. And that's when we actually started getting bids from contractors. So what what we feel if we go back to, you know, full depth shoring, um with how complex it's gonna be, we're gonna go back to the situation where we're just not gonna get any bids.
So I guess as far as proposed to the county, there's, you've got two options, you can either move forward, you know, redesign with this potential se- seven million dollar project, which does seem to adhere with the FEMA scope, or try to get FEMA to amend the project, you know, and it would only be a savings to FEMA and taxpayers, it wouldn't neither one was gonna cost you anymore, so it's just been, you know, the concern is, now, the the open cut option, Robert, just ballpark timeframe for construction, surely the jacking is a much shorter type project than the open cut.
Uh it'll be much shorter, um I mean, Rick, I don't know if you can chime in on on what you think the time difference is, uh but, you know, I would think, you know, jacking it will probably be two, three months compared to, you know, maybe nine months to a year.
For for all twelve culverts?
Well, you're only replacing four.
Oh, four, okay, yeah, so the jacking option, yeah, two, three months, um the open cut for each one, you're probably looking, so that they're not gonna do all of them at once, um you know, they're going to do do one, basically one at a time. Um so it definitely opens up the the timeframe more, probably the nine month, you know, I don't think it would take a year, but the nine month would be a good for the open cut.
Okay, so explain this to me, we're replacing four culverts.
Yes, sir.
It takes two months for the process of replacing one culvert. You need sixty days.
He's saying he he estimates uh a contrary, we need two to three months to go in there and bore in, bore in all four versus nine to twelve months to open cut.
I'm having a hard time understanding why open cut is a much more complex procedure. Cause you're 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 cutting open the road, you're pulling out the culvert.
I do one half at a time and keep pulling, do one half at a time and uh and you're telling me that's gonna take twice as long as boring?
Yeah, because that's precisely so, because you're not open cutting the road, you're not affecting the road, it doesn't require the shoring.
No, I understand, I do this all the time, much smaller projects, and I mean, I'm digging with shovels, I mean, I don't understand this. Like, I'm sorry, I'm a little irritated, we do this every day on the counter. So I don't understand, other than if it's some type of engineering nuance of why it's taking so long to cut a road, to pull out a culvert, you've already got the culverts ordered, you got them on site, one at a time, you're placing them, I mean, I can't, I I don't understand this.
These, these are eight foot culverts that are about fifteen feet below the surface of the road.
No, I understand, I did one on the road myself.
They're they're deep culverts, uh you got one concrete covert on each end that needs to be replaced, each one requires its own trench. Then you're only cutting a half the road at a time and maintaining traffic, so you gotta cut down, remove that covert, put in its replacement, backfill it back up and then open cut the other side of the road after you've moved traffic, cut out the 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 rema- the remainder of the existing covert, replace it, you only can do half at a time. And then do that in about three or four trenches, depending on where the eight foot tank cars are at. As opposed, and meanwhile, that's a hugely affecting traffic. The the other option is work down at the covert level way below the road and you're just jacking a pipe in right next to an existing one.
Yeah, I understand, I just think that's way too long of a timeframe, we're professionals.
And maybe, but these are the engineers, not the contractors, the contractor may have a different idea, you know, how long it'll take them to get it done and.
Right. But y'all been talking to some contractors about this, right?
We talked to contractors about uh thi- this process and more about the bypass road, the concerns about the bypass road.
So as far as the open cut process, y'all discussed that with some contractors?
They have, within the, the construction, uh.
Robert has?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, so maybe Robert, you could kind of help uh elaborate a little more as to the uh amount of time and and the amount of expense being so much more on the open cut process?
I mean, that that, I mean, Cody hit on all of it, I mean, it's, you can only do half from covert at a time, so you basically, you know, shut down half the road, you you do one trench at a time for each covert and then you're gonna have to, you know, switch over all your barrier and everything uh to open up the other side and, you know, complete all the culverts. And yes, it's, the the main thing is due to the fact of the size of the culverts and also the depth of the culverts. And the complexity of of the the shoring, like I said, it won't be just, it won't be just driving sheet pile down and then cutting it out. They're gonna have to do um whaling uh systems to support the 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 sheet pile because of the exposed face.
We did this very same type of project for City of Ider and that was two culverts, two box cords side by side on on uh FM one or uh FM one oh five and it it took twelve months for that crossing, two box cords. And they weren't nearly as deep as those these crossings, it's just a very complicated process to do half culverts at a time. Tank cars, and these and these are tank cars, two of them are tank cars, so you have to remove, you have to get down there and cut the tank car, remove half of it, put in half of a new tank car and then when you get the other one back in there, you have to, you know, weld it together with plates or whatever. So it it's it's just a much more, you know, complex procedure than than jacking pipe.
All right. Which thing?
Well, it's all aggravating.
Yeah, and you said FEMA will pay the seven million, but not the four million?
The four for the bridge?
Yeah.
The bridge, they would definitely consider an improvement, cause there's no bridge like now. The seven million is removing and replacing per their scope without without needing a bypass road that should qualify for full coverage.
I just wanted that on the record, that they're willing to pay seven and not four.
And that's just replacing half of the culverts, as they would have replaced with a four point eight million dollar bridge.
And increase the, really decrease the water level.
Yes, it would have about three feet. It's significant.
You said there's twelve culverts there right now.
There's either ten or twelve, I I can't, I think there's either eight tank cars and two culverts, two concrete boxes on either end or there's, there's eight, two on either end, I don't remember right now.
So we're just replacing the tank car?
We're replacing two of the tank cars that FEMA declared was dam- were damaged and then the two box culverts, concrete box cords at either end, they they said were damaged. The the re- the other remaining uh six to eight culverts, they said did not need to be replaced.
Where would they, where would those put in, DLO? I guess what I'm thinking is if we're gonna be replacing four of them, two years, three years down the road, what condition are the other ones in, we're gonna be right back in the same same boat two or three years from now?
Well, I think FEMA, and I, this is that, this predates my involvement in the project, but uh my understanding is FEMA thought that those four were damaged during Harvey. Uh they're they're not replacing them because they were uh it's in bad shape, you know, after years, but I think that they said those were specifically damaged during, that's why.
There's been a whole shift in that crossing, in a certain, in a section of it, and it happened during Harvey. They looked at the aerials from before and after and it's just very evident.
So either option avoids the bypass road, which is our biggest concern. Uh there's, there's advantages, you know, to one, but if if the other one FEMA pays for, you you know, that seems like the the way to go, just right now, do you want to try to get the other one qualified or not, or do you just wanna move forward with the one that is qualified?
Well, could we, Marissa, this is probably a question for you, could we submit a request to FEMA that says option one is this, here's concerns we have about it, which is has to do with the bidders maybe not bidding it, whatever else you 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 and Robert have concerns about, and here's the price for that, or option two is this, and any concerns you have with that, and here's the price for that, and just see which one FEMA will approve, is that a, is that a way to go forward here, or do we need to, do we need to do something different?
That's a great question, I actually I don't know if I've seen a request where it kind of lays out two different options before. Um I would say that's something that we could, we could try and send that up to FEMA and get their way in. Um again, if we can get in contact with someone from FEMA um to kind of weigh in on that and narrow that option down for you guys, we could also kind of pursue that first and then um you know, maybe if if we're not able to kind of arrange something that way, we could uh pursue that forward, uh that that path forward, excuse me. Um sorry, I can't give you guys a a more definitive answer, it's just something I haven't seen before.
And and just so everybody knows, when we were dealing directly with FEMA, we had a PDMG, we we could get these answers pretty quickly, but we don't have that anymore. And I I don't guess we have had that since about twenty twenty two, somewhere in there. So now we're going through TDM, TDM's contractor is Colin Resnick and that's the process to go through now, correct? So who would be the one that would reach out to someone with FEMA on this?
I can reach out to headquarters and we can try and get a meeting scheduled.
We wanna have another workshop like this and have that person participate, or how do you, how would you recommend having that?
Um it doesn't matter, it normally does take a, it'll take a little bit to get FEMA personnel involved.
You think we can get them on here today, huh?
No, no chance.
All right.
Is there a time limit to spend the funds, or if it's a hard day?
Do we have any kind of a deadline on the uh funding availability? Marissa?
No, sir, there's no deadline, um so I guess the, I'm not sure if you guys have, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pull something up really quick. The only thing I can think of as far as deadlines go is that the project does have a period of performance. Um so if we are past that day, we'd have to do a time extension, um so that would just basically be requesting FEMA um to extend the deadline to complete the scope of work. Um it looks like we have a time extension and process that maybe needs a little bit more information. Um that's really the the only concern as far as timeline goes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you wanna add, or?
No, sir, I just uh just, you know, wanna figure out what we can or can't do when we move forward, you know, accordingly. Uh whatever is the next amount of cost or preferably.
Yes, sir, with the uh, you know, benefit of making sure that citizens don't get blocked in down there. Whether it's through construction or or another disaster. Commissioners, anything else?
With FEMA mentor.
Aaron, did you have something?
Yes, sir, I would just like to add, if if we're gonna get a call with FEMA, we we need to leave the bridge option in there. So if they say that we have to go with option one, which costs seven million dollars, but the bridge option is truly already approved and we've already had a bid on it and it's only four point nine, maybe some common sense will prevail here and and they'll say, you know what, we can just improve this map or 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 increase this amount on this bridge, so I I would love to keep that option in there.
Sounds like a good idea.
I would hope, if they're willing to let us do another improved project, that they're still gonna cap the project, then could we change the design of the bridge and still have a bridge and they could cap it at whatever your cost estimate is now, that we know that we can get some some bids at that point. Um I mean, a bridge is obviously the best solution.
Right.
A natural piling bridge, but.
Yeah, I agree, Aaron, though, if they're willing to pay seven million dollars for a project that is unimproved, well, why not just pay less for a much better project?
Does that make sense?
Well, that is.
And three hundred thousand, that's going to LGA. I assume, Aaron, you, the amount you sent me that we've already kept, is that, is that all on engineering?
Yes, sir. Does that include the original feasibility study that we did, that presented all these options?
Everything since inception of this project.
The the problem is that in the beginning, whenever we apply for PA, after a disaster, you have a timeline to get everything in. You don't have any um educated guesses, you don't have any hydrology studies or any kind of engineering, you're basically trying to come up with a solution without any education on it. And that's what happens um from the beginning.
We run that up every time there are disasters, if you have.
I think it's that way by design.
Many a time to prepare an application, you don't know what is the best solution to get, or something. Now, thank you all.
You have anything to add, Chief Rowell, anything you wanna add to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for being here, who else do you have, I know you have Miss Neal and then Reagan?
Yes, sir.
And another gentleman come in?
I'm Matty Holloway.
Oh, hey, how are you, Matt? Aaron and Marissa, thank y'all for being here, is there anything else that anybody wants to add regarding the workshop before we move on? Robert and Rick, thank y'all as well, y'all are welcome to stay, but if you wanna leave, that's fine as well, we're gonna move on with the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. We will uh keep the Commissioners Court up to date with the next discussion that we're gonna have, and if that needs to be a workshop, we'll get that set up uh accordingly. Whatever the Commissioner would like to do is what we'll do. The Commissioner, I mean Commissioner Young. All right, item number four, she inherited this project, by the way. Consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to amend the fiscal year twenty four rural law enforcement grants SB twenty two budget as follows. Consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to amend the fiscal year twenty four rule law enforcement grants SB twenty two budget as follows. Twenty two thousand dollars from the firearms line item, seventy one thousand, six hundred thirty four dollars from the safety equipment line item. Twenty five thousand dollars from the other equipment line item. That'll all be moved to the auto purchase and dues and subscription. The total amount is, uh, one eighteen, five thirty four for auto purchase and one hundred dollars for dues and subscription, which is probably the, uh, buy board fee, I would imagine. So, move back to Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
This falls on the guidelines of the SB twenty two, that we could do this?
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase a two thousand twenty five Polaris Ranger utility vehicle. VIN number ending in line two four four from Outpost Power Sports Incorporated in the amount of thirty nine thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and seventy four cents. Utilizing line item zero three four five six zero five seven four auto purchase in the RLE grants budget.
Senator.
Motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase a two thousand twenty five Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred crew cab truck PPV. VIN number ending in four five nine nine from Lake Country Chevrolet in the amount of seventy six thousand, four hundred forty eight dollars and eighty five cents. Utilizing the Goodbye Cooperative Purchasing Program and funding the purchase with the RLE SB twenty two grants as follows. Seventy six thousand, one forty five, I'm sorry, seventy six thousand, one forty eight eighty five for auto purchase and three hundred dollars out of dues and subscriptions. That's on the RLE budget.
Senator.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Probably I should have added under discussion that that includes all the equipment for that truck, cameras, lights, sirens. It's not just the vehicle.
That is correct, yes, it's a fully, fully rigged out. The stipulation of the grant is those are allowable expenses provided that they are permanently affixed to the vehicle and it's done at time of purchase.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Item seven, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to accept a donation from Smurfette West Rock in the amount of three thousand dollars to be used. To purchase life saving tourniquets for the sheriff's office that approved and then the fiscal year twenty four county budget as follows. Increase revenue in the amount of three thousand dollars for donation to sheriff's department and increase expenditure as the amount of three thousand dollars. Under line item zero one zero five six zero three five two, minor equipment and supplies.
Senator.
Motion by Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and we sure appreciate that contribution from, uh, West Rock. Number eight, consider approval of request by the county treasurer, Deborah McWilliams, to change the name of the HMGP VR three, four three three two bank account. Account number ending in seventeen nineteen at First Financial Bank NA to HMGP VR.
Senator.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider acceptance of resignation of Mr. Carl Price as emergency services commissioner for ESD number four, detective July twenty third, twenty twenty four. An appointment of Ms. Kristen White to fill the vacancy at terminal end of December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Commissioner Young?
Um, I had a couple of of nomination forms come in for this position that I feel like Kristen White would, uh. Be able to serve in this capacity and she is willing and and ready to do it, so I move to appoint her to this vacancy.
Senator.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? Mrs. White is here. She's also our veteran services officer, so, uh, thank you for agreeing to serve in this additional capacity and, uh, we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, considering possibly authorize a purchasing agent to solicit bids for hazard mitigation grant program four three three two dash zero two three three. Phase two, construction of the hurricane safe room.
Senator.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for courthouse and jail renovation and construction. This is an ARCA allocated project.
So, thank.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? The timeline is all the bids will be in by around October third. Is that correct? We get it all together and on October eighth, we'll sit in and discuss all of it and decide exactly what we're going to do forward with the contract. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, discussion on any other non agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Sheriff, I know y'all had that, uh, food, uh, the salad, the food bank and, uh, the planning commission came out with food at the church this morning and, uh, that all go well?
Went well.
Great, thank you for handling the security.
Always a lot of, uh, interest in there.
Yes, sir.
Probably way more need than we have the ability to serve, but we keep trudging along.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody have anything further? Any announcements or discussion items?
Don't forget we're serving lunch to all the county employees.
At eleven o'clock, three o'clock?
Anybody who'd like to come help serve would be great. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Great, thank you. All right, if nothing further, we'll move to twenty three. I'm sorry, that's thirteen, not twenty three. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank y'all for your time here today.